We call this meeting of the Bucks County Commissioners November 7, 2024 to order. And Sergeant Dave Kendredine, our Director of Security, will lead us in the Pledge of Legions. Thank you, and good morning. Does it sound okay? There was some feedback before, but we'll begin with public comment, and Ed Mackhouse is our first speaker.
Ed Mackhouse from Buckingham, former teacher, engineer scientist, engineer physicist. Physics deals with the balance of power, power and energy. So a lot of the agenda items here deal with mental health, intellectual disabilities, early intervention services, substance abuse services. A lot of people have problems, and there could be misdiagnosis and stuff. Drugs in general are faster response when people have troubles than the counseling and mental health things. The last election, people overwhelmingly support President Trump, but it doesn't mean he's perfect. No one is perfect politicians. People expect everything from the politicians. There's no magic solution. There's a cost involved. So trade-offs like the fossil fuels that Trump's going, it's going to have some pollution effects, but the pollution in America is less than from China. So overall, we become energy independent, energy export. We have money and energy to do things. So Trump ran on making America great again, and also to make America healthy again. Robert F. Kennedy Jr., here's a picture. He's, looks much better than Rachel Levine. And I think when you go for health, you should go for persons more healthy. He's talking about exercise, processed foods, seed oils. I question seed oil pesticides, additional, no mRNA vaccines. I think you have to balance between what is profitable. He's saying that the pharmacy just wants to do stuff that's patented, makes money. So he'll probably have a role in the administration involved, Health, Federal Drug Administration. We have to rely on the government Drug Administration for food and stuff, processed foods. People go around and eat bad stuff and stuff, and then they want to go to the doctors and get a magic pill or an idea of a vaccine to solve all our problems. Kennedy had some problems. He was on drugs and stuff like that, so he knows what it's about. So there's no magic solution. Education, I think, is the way. Drugs are emergency measures. We have to increase the education and awareness and follow the leadership. And emphasis, the money capitalism should reward what's successful. So we have trillion dollar deficit. We have a lot of problems. There's no magic solution. We've got to keep working together, a coalition, Democrats, Republicans, to better address our problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's try to stay away from commenting on how people look today, and Beth Roth, you're next.
Good morning. Beth Roth from Bedminster. I know we've been through a lot the last few days and those days leading up to the election, but I wanted to speak about Quakertown. And I know that there was an incident where someone showed up at 4:30 to go in to cast a vote, and she was not allowed in the building. She was told the line had been cut off. There was no one in line, and she was not allowed to go in and vote. And so that's a concern. And another concern was there were ladies outside wearing little badges that said poll monitor. Not sure where they came from, not sure why they were there or under whose authority they were there. Poll monitor is not a thing. So if groups are allowed to send people to watch the poll lines, then my group would be allowed to do the same. And so my question is, is my group allowed to do the same? And it was good to know, this, I'm sorry, this is a snide comment, no one stormed the polls and stole ballots. And we were grateful that it was a nice and easy time at the polls, at least it was where I was, and everything went well. Thank you.
Liz Deal. Hi, Liz Deal, Sellersville Borough District One. I'm a judge of elections. I'm also committee person. I'm here because I want change. Calling the Board of Elections the night before the elections was a nightmare. I got to the polls to check the cage as a judge of elections. I had all the wrong ballots. It was Regalsville's ballots. Where are my ballots? It took me three and a half hours to call to get someone to answer the Board of Elections. That is so unacceptable. I wouldn't leave, even though it was my daughter's 18th birthday, because I knew as judge, if we don't take care of this problem now, we're in trouble tomorrow. So I called and called and called. You have one beautiful person working at the Board of Elections, and I mean one, for these calls. Her name's Grace. She did a great job. But I feel she was taken advantage of because you didn't have anybody else. So you're understaffed, clearly. She did a great job, but one person's not enough, which is why I couldn't get through. Finally, from staying there and pushing and pushing and pushing and the machine inspector trying, we found the ballots in Regalsville. And that's how it turned into three and a half hours. I waited and I demanded that I get those ballots returned to them. There wasn't enough time for them to find and get my ballots, so I didn't get them to the next day, but I did the best that I could. I believe that a lot of these problems shouldn't have happened. I don't know why you're digging so much into the boxes, because everything was a mess. And then the box said the correct ballots were in the box, but they weren't correct. Moving on, so I want better management, and I have heard and read that there is a million dollars still in your bank account. And this has come in from our controller Pam Von Blanc, that you haven't used. Why? Why not get more poll pads? Because these lines are absolutely ridiculous. I was able to do well at our poll because I had a great team, but a lot of people didn't. Why don't you have more staff other than one person answering the phone? Also, the next day, two and a half hours, I had another problem because the ballots were wrong again. Two and a half hours for anybody to answer the phone. Understaffed again, unacceptable. There's no way that we can have election integrity if you're not going to answer the phone. I'm not a new judge, so I worked things out, but a lot of new judge of elections didn't get the help, and there was a lot of problems. So right off the bat, not the right ballots. The other problem was on their certificate to cast votes was wrong. It said you have 850 ballots, and they wanted me to sign it. I'm not going to sign it because I have 1,150 ballots. Last time it was too little, this time it's too much. I called a bunch of other judges. They had the same problem. Again, nobody to answer the phone, so please, don't keep the money in the.
Fran Haller. Fran Haller? If that's not right, it probably didn't pick up your handwriting correctly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Fran Haller, Newtown Township. You can't hear me? Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay. Well, I lost some seconds, but it's not long. Good morning. I'm Fran Haller, Newtown Township. I don't expect you to have the answer to this at your fingertips, but by the next meeting, you should be able to respond. UACAVA Uniformed and Overseas Citizens Absentee Voting Act. UACAVA is the acronym. Pennsylvania had 356,000 overseas citizens apply to register to vote through UACAVA. Election integrity groups were scrutinizing UACAVA prior to this election, and there has been documented abuse of this act. My questions. Did Bucks County have any UACAVA registrants? Were their applications vetted to discern that they were indeed U.S. citizens with a valid address in the United States? Did Bucks County still accept applications from UACAVA registrants after the deadline? If Bucks County did have UACAVA registrants, how did they get their ballot? Was it mailed to them? Was it emailed as it was done in other states? This is an election integrity issue, and it should be addressed now before we have further elections. I hope you can answer these questions at the next meeting. Thank you.
Mike Caputo.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Mike Caputo. I'm a duly elected state representative in PA, also a combat veteran. I just wanted to give you some insight on what happened at the government building in Five Points in Levittown. I submitted a mail-in application six weeks before the election and never got it, never received it. I reached out, found out what to do. I went to Five Points to try to remedy the situation, and when I got there, the line was around the building. They had one side window open, and before I could even get to the window, it was about a two-hour wait. So when I finally did get inside the building, a woman came out actually and said that we should form two lines, one of which would incorporate those people who hadn't received their ballots. And I immediately stepped up and asked everybody to step behind me and form the line, which I ended up being first in line. I got inside the building, and I witnessed total confusion. It's a very big building, but it's only got a little bit of space for the public, and there was a small window which you could access to people that were working there. I saw a sheriff in there who was telling the workers that they were being sued, and this didn't really help the situation at all. They were sitting around starry-eyed, and they had one computer, one printer, and 100 people in line. And at that rate, it just looked like voter suppression to me. I was able to cast my vote. However, I don't know how everybody else made out, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention this morning. Somebody should have got out ahead of this. Somebody was responsible. Okay, one computer, one printer. I'm sure there's more than one computer and one printer in that office. Somebody could have programmed the other computers, other printers. Nobody else was doing any business in that office that day. So they could have commandeered some of the computers, some of the printers. Somebody could have stepped up and helped the situation along. I don't know whose responsibility that is, but somebody should be talked to. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Thank you very much.
Kristy Ann Morris.
Kristy Morris, and I'm from Middletown Township, and I had a similar experience at Levittown Government Service Center. I waited in line two and a half hours just to get a ballot, and then I turned it in at the drop box, and I saw the same thing, one printer. One printer, one person there. And if you knew, on the 17th of October, and you saw those lines, why wasn't anything done? If in the real world, if there's a problem and demand goes sky-high, you react. You have people, you had the equipment, and nothing was done. So I have to ask myself, why? Is it incompetence, or is it intentional? And a lot of us felt it was intentional, because there was a lot of people going home, and they were very upset. That was my experience with the lines. I was volunteered, or excuse me, I volunteered to be a judge of elections this year, and I can tell you, it was terrible for many of us new people, because we could not get through to the Board of Elections on the phone. And I noticed, in your agenda, item number three, a huge amount of money for call center staffing, didn't work. I wouldn't pay that bill. It was horrible. I called at least 10 times. The phone rings, it goes straight into a fax. And finally, I went to the other judges and talked to them and got help, and then I tried again, try again. It was not five times, it was more like 15 times, where I could not reach anybody at Board of Elections. Luckily, I had good help on the sidelines. But that's not a way to do that. And I think, for the future, two things. Survey the people that are working, the judges. What worked? What didn't? What can we do? And the other thing, fix the phones.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name's Gail Thibodeau. I'm a committee woman in Middletown Township. And at my polling place, I have to say kudos to the election staff that assisted voters on Tuesday. It was pretty crazy in the morning, but then things calmed down, and it was steady. So it was great to see so many people voting. Until, one gentleman who couldn't be here today, who votes at my polling place, and he asked me to play this video that he shared with us.
...in person on October 24th for Donald Trump. I waited three and a half hours in line to vote for Donald Trump. I checked my status on the Department of State website, and it said my vote was canceled. I got a letter from the Bucks County Board of Elections, saying that my request for a mail-in ballot was not accepted for the following reasons, and there is no reason. But I know the reason, it's because I voted for Donald Trump.
So this gentleman's name is Francis Bergmeyer, and I have a copy of the letter. And where it says, "You're rejected for the following reason," it's blank. So I would appreciate if somebody would look into that. I believe he voted provisionally, after all, but he couldn't be here today, like I said. And I was there on Friday at the Levittown Government Services Building, and I gotta say, the voters that were there were so enthusiastic. They, some waited six hours, they were there from 10:00 in the morning, and I was like, they just wanted to vote early. I was like, I'm going to vote on Election Day, and there were no lines. But anyway, so I, the, one of the candidates provided water and pizza for everybody waiting, chairs, so it was, you know, like I said, they weren't complaining, I was amazed. So, thank you.
Andy Warren.
As the fifth person in a row from Middletown to speak today, I'm not so sure if anybody's left back in Middletown this morning, but we do care. And of all the things that I've heard this morning, nothing is astounding as Ed Mackhouse standing here, supporting Republicans hiring Robert Kennedy as the, in their administration. So we really have come a long way in the time of, since this election. My concern, after, I know the Retirement Board's happy today, I would suspect, with our 401Ks, hopefully, I have, concerning the agenda, item number 10, C and D, between the two of them, that's almost a million dollars, to purchase the property and rehab the property. What, is it a home, is it a, I mean, what are we purchasing? And that would be, and what's the rehab of it going to be? Item number 19, back to the gift that keeps on giving, we're now spending AARP money up at, through 2026. That, sooner or later, I guess, will be, will deplete our money. I just wondered when, if any, that date is in sight. And item number 22, the appointments to the Workforce Development Board. The question I have about that board, I'm assuming that that is a public board, like y'all, and that they would have public meetings. When, when are those public meetings, and where do they meet, so that we could attend? Thank you.
So we're going to go backwards here, and begin with the Workforce Development Board meetings. Ms. McKevitt, when do they meet? Do you recall?
The Workforce Development Board, when they meet? They meet four times a year.
Sorry. They meet four times a year.
And do you know where they meet?
They meet, traditionally, they've been meeting at the Career Link.
Career Link. And I believe it's probably on their website, or there may be something, and they're going to have to announce the meetings.
Right, we can get you a copy of that.
And then going backwards, while you have that, pardon me? They meet four times a year, usually at Career Link, in Trevo's, and you can go on the website and get more information. As far as the Bucks County Community College and that training, did you want to say anything about that, Ms. McKevitt, number 19? Or Commissioner Harvey, on 19? It's the Community College one, the workforce...
How much what? Money for what?
Of the extension.
Oh, for the Community College, okay.
While you were looking for that, I'm going to answer the other question. These are homes that are being, at no cost to the county, as you saw, being rehabilitated for people who have mental health and disability problems.
What?
Both. It could be, but there was two programs we were working on, so I must have... Okay, it is the same address. So what, some of it's coming from...
Two funding sources.
Okay, so some's from HUD, and long-term from HUD, and some's from CBDG. I'm sorry about that. I saw two and thought they were at different, two different places.
I can add something, too. So, and, and people who know, we have Middletown residents in the, in the building, people who know Levittown know that there are bigger homes on some of the corner properties that became doctors' offices, chiropractors', dentist's offices, at some point. This property was one of those, and so it's being converted from what used to be a doctor, I think it was a chiropractor's office or something, on a corner property in one of the Levittown sections, and it's being converted, you know, by housing for rapid rehousing for people. So there's a lot of work that has to be done inside.
And what about the college? Did we get an M. L. D.? Is that the veterans one? Is that the veterans one? No? Okay. So I'm going to start, and we can each add anything that needs to be added, but I wanted to start on some of the questions that were asked about the election. And I'm going to ask you all this, that the election is over, and I know that there's been people who haven't been willing to kind of listen to us, but I'm going to tell you, it's over, and I am telling you the truth. So first of all, you need to go to the legislators to have changes, not us. The bugs are there because they have not corrected Act 77. Republican and Democratic county commissioners all over this state have been begging the legislator to change Act 77, so we can handle the problems that you're talking about. They are stuck, they can't agree on anything, and there's nothing we are, we can do, we are victims of it. So we're doing the best with what we have. The other thing I'm going to say is, I really don't know what this poll monitor thing is. I tried to text some people, are there gold-badged poll monitors? I'm going to, Gail's going to answer, hold on.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, did you say hall, H.A.L.L., or poll?
Poll.
I'm not 100% sure. I'm guessing they were badges from one of the major political parties.
I believe they were, and I believe they were from the Republican Party.
No.
Well, they weren't from the Democratic Party, so they could have been from...
They were.
Well, let me just say this. All I know is it's similar to your task force, that you just decided to name a task force, they decided to call themselves poll monitors. I don't know who they were. But I want to move on to what's really more important, and explain to you the line that were there. So every year since Act 77 passed, we have had 100 people, in the course of the year, come in for on-demand voting. 100 people, and we've had no problems. We have certain staff, not all staff, that are trained in that particular shore system computer. It has a separate server, and if we've had a total of 100 people come in every year from Upper, Central, and Lower County, we were more than adequately prepared. On the day that it started, the Republican Party and Donald Trump put out, I'm not criticizing them, a notice for people to come early vote in Pennsylvania. We do not have early vote in Pennsylvania. They were confused. So when they sent all that out, all these people came to these three places, saying they wanted to early vote. What they were actually getting was the mail-in ballot that you could have applied for since January. And basically, like you said, you put it in the drop box anyway. You didn't need to do that. You could have asked for it months ago, and then just put it in the mail or a drop box. But they confused you, and we became overwhelmed with literally hundreds of people in line. At one point, we were even accused of stopping the line. How do you win that one? We knew how long it was going to take, just a minute, we knew how long it was going to take each day for each person, it takes about 10 minutes a person. So we went out there and drew the line, when we knew those people wouldn't, when, I asked you to open your mind to this, when those people wouldn't get in anymore, and then we asked that nobody else enter, because what was going to happen is, they were going to wait three hours and be told, go home. So we were doing it as a favor. On the final day, we went out to do it at 2:20. At 2:15, and if you want me to give it to you, I will, we got notice from the state that they wanted us to serve everybody who got in line by 5:00. We had five minutes between when we got it, and we got out to security to tell them not to do that. No one walked away. No one. We have videotapes all over the place. So I'm asking you to understand, this is why Act 77 needs to be fixed. We need to have early voting in Pennsylvania. This was mail-in voting. Ask your legislators to get us early voting. That's what other states do, and they do it at polling places. The three places you went to are Government Services Building, and I want to tell you, and I'm sure the sheriff will say that, I don't think anybody in there is sitting around starry-eyed. And I'm going to tell you, they all work, we have, even the sheriff's department, I would tell you, work very hard in there, and it's insulting to hear after those people sat there, hour after hour after hour, serving people, and serving people who were not very nice to them, just be told they're starry-eyed just sitting there. That's all I have to say. Commissioner Harvey?
Sure. I had a couple of things. First, the lower Bucks Government Services Center and the upper Bucks Government Services Center did not used to offer any, any election or voter services, until this board came into power. Okay? So we've offered that. It is too small a building in lower Bucks, not big, which is the reason why we're building a whole bigger building, which will have a much bigger office for voter services. In terms of equipment, we are limited to the equipment. A lot of people talk about election integrity. It's a buzzword, it's a fancy little word. If you want us to use computers that are only hardwired to the State Department to maintain security, then we rely on the State Department of this Commonwealth to provide us with the equipment we need, which is fixed amount. We actually have more, because, Ms. Humphrey, who's, you know, you might be asking, you know, if she's just trying to look cool, she always looks cool. She's actually been battling a concussion for the past several days. She's still here at work. She worked for about 20 hours on election night with a concussion, trying to make sure that the election was handled successfully. So thank you for being the person you are. I will do that. I'm sure not everybody will, which is shame on them. Because of her actions a year ago, we had more equipment than, quite frankly, we're supposed to have from the State Department, because she asked for it, and pretty much demanded it. So the fact that, you know, first off, you know, an office that didn't used to be open is now. Commissioner Marceglio dealt with the mail-in balloting question, because we had people in line, and our staff would go to them and tell them, well, are you here for mail-in balloting? Oh, no, I'm here to vote early. Well, no, you're actually just hearing, here to request a mail-in ballot. Oh, I don't want a mail-in ballot, I want to vote early. So we had that a lot, from people who were misinformed and misled, and I understand that this is still, after four years, a new process for people. Not everybody votes every year, because we have elections every year. So for the people who only come every four years, and vote every four years, this was new to them. Maybe this was the first time they voted this way. So, and I will correct Commissioner Marceglio one thing, because it was both parties that were telling people to early vote. Because I remember, you know, four years ago, it was the Democratic Party telling people to early vote, and we had longer lines at our three voting locations, or election offices, and I was the one on the phone to the state Democratic Party, yelling at them to stop telling people to early vote, because it was killing our staff. So this has to get fixed. We are doing, as you said, the best we can, and I'll, in my commissioner comment, I'll address the work that our staff has done, because they've taken a lot of abuse in this public comment period, which is unnecessary. Were there phone calls that, you know, kept bouncing around? Yes. I know that none of you, were, in fact, very few of the people in this room, were in that Board of Elections office on Election Day, and heard and saw the level of work those people are doing, which I guarantee you, I don't try to insult people, there are a few people in the room that this might not be true for, but I guarantee you, they worked harder than probably many of you have worked at any single job. Certainly, they worked harder than I have at any point in my life at any job I've done. So, and I consider myself a relatively hard worker. So in terms of some of the other comments, I'm glad that people were allowed to give out water and chairs. Thankfully, we're not in the state of Georgia, where it's illegal to give people waiting in line to vote water. That is illegal. Now, I know that there's, I don't, I've read the Bible, I know there's a biblical phrase somewhere about Jesus saying, you know, when I was thirsty, you gave me water, and the disciples saying, when did I, when did we do that? He said, whenever you saw any one of us, any, any of your neighbors who was thirsty, and you gave them water, you gave it to me. So Georgia, I guess, has their own view on whether or not Christianity should be legal. In terms of, I'm trying to look at the other issues here. Certainly, Sheriff Commissioner Marceglio's, you know, outrage at our county staff being insulted by saying that they weren't doing anything, or just sitting around not working. You know, it's, it's pretty disgusting, quite frankly. Ms. Haller asked questions about overseas voters. In fact, we had about 1,200 overseas voters who are registered. We do not accept the registrations, that is a federal process. The federal government, it's a federal law that we have to follow, that if you live overseas, you can register online through the federal government, and you become a registered federal voter. You can only vote in federal offices, so they could not have voted for state, or anything, or anything else, or any of the referendums that we had, on a couple of our ballots, we had referendums. You know, they are going to be counted, because they are American citizens, and as American citizens, even if they do not live in the United States right this second, they are still entitled to vote in an American election, because they are American citizens. So this board has tried very hard to make sure that people who are registered to vote are allowed to vote, because that is what it means to be a democracy and be American. So anyone challenging that, whether they are a citizen or a state senator, you know, or quite frankly, being un-American. So, and that's not something I'm going to be taking, you know, lightly. Long lines on October 17th, we didn't have long lines on October 17th for mail-in voting, for the, you know, in-person, on-demand. And, yeah, I think that's enough. Thank you.
I just wanted to also say that I know of people who said the same thing someone said about, they had sent their ballot in, but it didn't show on the state. Again, I encourage you to go to your state representative and ask them to put the money into the system and to send some money here. That would be really helpful, too. We need our controller to get an audit done so we can apply for some more federal money, but we're not going to do that. If, well, by one vote, they can't think.
Actually, it's not.
Yeah. And the Senate.
I just wanted to add the, the statement about our, the BoE's budget. So the BoE gets $2.4 million from the state under the caveat that we work 24 hours straight or 48 hours straight, however long is necessary to process people's right to vote. That money is used for nine things, according to that grant, or, I'm sorry, it might be eight, I apologize again, my, I'm a little. But one of them is we use to pay the overtime workers that come in and to help, so that money, you know what I mean, it gets spent every year. We don't carry a budget for it in the Board of Elections.
I'll just take a moment at this point. I just want to also say thank you to our Board of Elections staff. I mean, they really were here for, I feel like, a week straight without sleep. We have tons of departments that sent staff over. At midnight, I watched a whole set of people come in on election night. I had that privilege because even though I wasn't able to do anything there, I slept here that night. But I believe Ms. McKevitt, Mr. Harvey, Commissioner Harvey, Ms. Humphrey, I'm looking around, Mr. Ragula, that we're all here and we're up for probably 24 or 36 hours. That's how much just kind of oversight needs to kind of happen, and we do this every year. And Amy, and Ms. Patrick, I'm sorry, that's right. So we're done public comment for today, so I would take a, any questions or actually a motion to approve items one through 819E.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving to the regular agenda, we have one budget adjustment, number 18, Mr. Bascola.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your consideration. Adjustment number 18 for 2024 allows for additional expenditures in the Consumer Protection Department. They will be covering that from additional departmental revenue. It's no impact on the general fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve adjustment 18?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have one board appointment today?
Five.
Five board appointments, one for the library board, let's start with that.
For library board, we'll do the, well, we'll do them all together, we usually do. For a new term, for, this is a new appointment term will end 11/1/2027, Mr. Andrew Loretty. For workforce, the Bucks County Workforce Development Board, and just one thing to add, since Mr. Warren asked this question, so a lot of the members, since this is a sort of a state-mandated board, the different seats, spots on the board are typically, according to state regulations, set aside for certain backgrounds, professions, experiences. For example, it has to be someone with higher education, so we usually appoint the president of the community college. There have to be small business owners, large business owners, it has to be somebody representing labor unions, has to be somebody representing just education in general, it's usually somebody from the intermediate unit, or maybe one of the technical school directors, things like that. So community groups, things like that have to be appointed, so there's, you know, slots for that. The three appointments, these are, or four appointments, these are all reappointments, all will end 11/4/2027. Mr. Ted Durand, Dr. Mark Hoffman, who is actually the director of the intermediate unit, Mr. Jeffrey Krug, and Mr. Christopher Labange. I'll make a motion for those five appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to other civics, I'd like to just take off the One Piece Center that's on there, that's an accident, they were already contributed to this year. So I would ask that we make a motion to approve a woman's place for $4,000, Foundation's Community Partnership, $1,500, the Ivans House Resource and Referral Center for $2,500, the Peace Valley Holistic Center Cafe Program for $2,500, and Vida for $12,000. I made that as a motion, is there a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Operating Officers report?
Thank you. And I only want to echo the Commissioner's comments about the staff. And Election Day, I want to make sure that everyone knows that many county departments and row office departments participate in this process with the Board of Elections staff. They worked hours and hours and hours, not only on Election Day, but days leading up to it at night, on weekends, and they did a tremendous job. So I just want to echo your comments, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Solicitors report?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just one item to report, the board held its standing executive session yesterday, November 6th, with staff and legal counsel present to discuss personnel matters, potential litigation related to election issues, and to receive confidential legal advice. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner's comments, Commissioner DeJordalmo?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments on, on the past election. And, and I, I've listened to some of the complaints today during the public portion of the meeting, and certainly those problems and those complaints need to be heard and I was up in Harrisburg when they passed Act 77 back in 2019. And it was, it was pretty amazing that week when there was a debate about Act 77. And it was a compromise, or considered a compromise. I wasn't, I wasn't crazy about it, but when the vote went up, and I think I've said this before, when the vote went up in the House, which was the first place they voted, all the Republicans voted for Act 77, except for one, the gentleman from Lancaster County did not. And if I remember correctly, the Democrats that voted in favor was only about 35 or 40. So most of the Democrats in the House was probably about 55 or 60 who voted no. When the bill got over to the Senate, and again, the bill moved very, very quickly, way too quickly. There were plenty of things that needed to be addressed in that bill that were not addressed because it was the end of the, not the legislative session, but the end of the session in June, the end of June. And they were in a hurry to get the bill passed before we went home for the summer. Over in the Senate, I think it probably was the same type of a vote, I think all of the Senate Republicans voted yes, and most of the Democrats in the Senate voted no. And the compromise of that bill, or why it passed, was that the Republicans wanted to do away with straight party voting. If you remember, before 2020, you could go into the voting booth and not have to press each individual candidate, but press one button or lever, and you could vote straight Democrat or straight Republican. And the Republicans wanted to do away with that. And the Democrats wanted the mail-in ballot, mail-in voting, with everything, we've heard a lot about it today, this on-demand voting, this problem with drop boxes or whatever, they wanted that, and they got what they wanted, and Governor Wolf signed the bill. So that's what we're dealing with as a Board of Election, not only here in Bucks County, but across the whole state of Pennsylvania. And the County Commissioners Association, which all the county commissioners in Pennsylvania in all 67 counties, I mean, we, we all belong to this County Commissioners Association, we have been pointing out problems or things we'd like to see be changed for the last four years. And I spent 25 years in Harrisburg, and I'm not bragging, I know how that place works like the back of my hand. And I realize that there are legislators in Harrisburg, especially rank-and-file members, who, we have 10 state reps here in Bucks County, and I think they are more than willing to work on a compromise to try to make some of the changes that we want. I think leadership in the House and the Senate, Democrat and Republican, and I'm not pointing the blame on anybody, are, have not been that as willing and aggressive to try to work on a compromise, because if we're going to change some of these problems that you've talked about today and that we have, there's almost 400,000 people voted in Bucks County, 400,000 people, that's a lot, a big job, to make sure that that is run as smoothly as possible and as safe and securely as it possibly can. And I've watched what's going on in our Board of Election, especially over the last few weeks, preparing for the election, working to make sure that it's safe and secure. And, and I can tell you from the bottom of my heart, our election here in Bucks County, although we might have some problems, and some people had difficulties and problems, is as safe and secure and as fair and free as you could possibly do with the rules and the laws that we're working under. And I hope at some point in the future, hopefully this year, that the legislature and the governor can come together and make some of these changes that the counties are asking for, to help out. They can't throw more money at stuff, and money's not, not, not the solution right now. I don't care how much more money we had, I mean, it's not going to alleviate. Just, just think of trying to receive mail-in ballots the Tuesday before election, an application for a mail-in ballot, and the Boards of Election having to turn that over on Tuesday and get these out in the mail to the people who are requesting a ballot. And the people have to then turn it around, and they stick it in the mail, and it's got to get here by the following Tuesday. Just think of how difficult that is and how unfair that is. That date needs to be pushed back. This on-demand voting, be quite honest, it's just awful. It's just awful that other states have early voting and we have to do this on-demand voting, which is so cumbersome and so time-consuming. We need to do early voting, I mean, it's that simple. Whether it's a week or two weeks before, I mean, it's that much faster. It's like going to the polls and voting, getting in line, walking in, signing your name, and going to vote. And, you know, it's fast, it, it's easy, it's simple, this on-demand voting, it's just, it's just awful. It's just awful what happened. So, so we do need some changes. But, but the one thing that I really want to highlight and point out, the amazing work of our Board of Elections staff, the amazing work of the county employees who decided to go in and help out, we had 40 people at 7 o'clock in our Board of Elections, people from, in county government who came in and worked shifts. Forty people were there the whole time, at night, after midnight, trying to get these mail-in ballots opened and scanned and tabulated after 8 o'clock. I went down there and I told them, I said, yous are heroes. You really are. Just an amazing job they did, 400,000 people voted. Amazing job. They had problems, of course, of course there were problems. But they just did an amazing job, and they're heroes. And our director's not here, Tyler Burns, are right now up at the Board of Elections. I think they started at 10 o'clock trying to hand-count some ballots from the lower end. I think there were 2,500, Bob, is that how many? About 2,500, they're up there now hand-counting those ballots because they were not able to put them through the voting machines or the scanners, so they're up there doing that. But they are just heroes, I'm telling you, all of them. And, and, and you heard Bob talk about some of our staff here, Margie and Amy, Gail, and, and other people who stayed up all night and worked all night and made sure that things were going. They, they worked, they actually did the work. I saw Gail Humphrey there, she was putting them envelopes through the, the opening that we have, and remember, we have two envelopes, both of them envelopes have to be open. And I don't know how many ballots we finally had, 125, 30,000?
Yeah.
You have that number? I mean, if you could imagine opening envelopes, two envelopes for 130,000 mail-in ballot applications and extracting, and extracting that ballot, and then the ballots got to go through scanners. And we pretty much had that done early in the morning on, on Wednesday. I mean, they called the race here in Pennsylvania, the presidential race, they called that pretty early Wednesday morning. And it took people in our Board of Elections, and not only here in Bucks County, but I'm sure most, if not all, the other counties, doing the same thing, working hard and trying to make sure that election was safe and secure and done as quickly as possible to make sure they're safe and secure. So again, I know we got problems, but jeez, I don't, I don't know how our people that work here for the county could have done any more than they've done. And as far as I'm concerned, are heroes, and I think as far as anybody else who was down in that Board of Election that night and saw the work that was going on, and how everybody was determined to get it done safely and securely, I, I don't know how much more they could have offered. They're heroes, and I, I just want to make sure we give them the credit that they deserve, even though we had problems along the way, but the people at our Board of Elections deserve a lot of credit. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Harvey?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner DeJordalmo and Commissioner Merzegli. So just a couple of things. First, to start off, the county is currently, and is for the next couple of weeks, under what's called a burn ban. This was something that was requested of us by fire chiefs throughout the county, working through our emergency management agency. As we all know, it has not rained, well, I think the entire month of October did not see rain, any appreciable rain, and even before that, into September, I don't think, 40 days of no rain, is another sort of almost biblical reference. But, you know, very dangerous conditions out there, and so there's concern about, you know, the potential for fire if people are out doing burns. Check with your local municipalities as well, they may have, your local fire marshal may have a burn ban that's more, you know, comprehensive than ours. We're mostly focused on larger kind of burns, we don't let people out doing sort of bonfires and things of that nature, we don't want them burning, you know, yard waste, things like that. And just so you know, since, just in the past few weeks, we've had five major brush fires in this county from, and all over. And major brush fire means that it, it requires response, not just from the municipality where the burn is happening, but from surrounding municipalities in terms of personnel and equipment. And it's, some of it is caused by human beings accidentally, some of it is caused by, one was caused by an electrical transformer that happened to blow, which can happen anywhere at any time, quite frankly. So just be very careful and kind of understand that and, and keep that in mind. In terms of talking about our elections, obviously, we've said a lot already, echo the comments of Commissioner DeJordalmo, I'm, I'm going to add my own thoughts. Vote centers, which a lot of states have, you know, certainly if we were going Vote centers, which a lot of states have, you know, certainly if we were going to do a vote center and do early voting, would require, quite frankly, more physical space. We'd probably have to rent space in different places to actually do that. We'd want to have them in more than just three places so that people could just come in and vote. Keep in mind that when you go to vote and you get a ballot printed, you might wonder why it takes so long. Well, each ballot is specific to its precinct, even if the candidates are the same. It's one of the ways to prevent fraud is that there are the sort of unique characteristics of each ballot to make sure that each of the 304 precincts has their own ballot. And that's something that, you know, certainly I think the people appreciate that kind of detail to make sure that we're preventing any kind of possible, you know, election fraud. So when you apply, we're not, we don't have a stack of generic ballots we can just hand you when you walk in. On top of that, even with this election, we've got, as you heard, 10 different state representative districts in this county, all of them are up for reelection this year. And so there's, you know, even if we didn't have 304 individual precincts, we've got 10 different districts. So we've got to find out where you live, we've got to verify that you're an actual voter who's supposed to be voting here, find out which precinct you're in, and then print the precinct, actually, your ballot for you specifically to go out. On-demand was never designed to be vote centers, that's not what the intent was. This is not early voting. Early voting would have more staff, more equipment, bigger spaces. These are courtesies, which I will add, a lot of counties in this Commonwealth do not offer on-demand voting. We do. And so, and some of the other big counties, most, all of them, I think, probably all the big counties do as well. In terms of looking at the positives, in terms of what our staff has done, just this year, getting these statistics, 153,449 applications for mail and absentee ballots, 153,499, that was processed by our staff this year. In fact, they processed more than that because we have, starting in July and August and through September, we have third-party groups that send out mailers to people's houses and tell them, "Hey, vote by mail." We have the political parties that do it, we have people going door-knocking for both sides that tell people to vote by mail, and that confuses people often. They start to think, "Well, maybe, you know, gee, when, maybe I'm supposed to get my ballot, maybe I have to apply again." So they send a second application or a third application. And even though the computer will come up with telling the operator who's working in our office that it's a duplicate application, the employee still has to go through that application because we don't know, did the person apply a second time by accident, or did they change something? Maybe they changed the address where they want the ballot mailed. How do we know they didn't do that? You know, so we have to go through and verify that there's a difference. So it's not simple, simply seeing duplicate pop up and just pushing it aside. It has to be gone through, and time is taken on that sense. So we do start hiring extra staff coming in, we start working overtime, our staff has mandated overtime for most of the fall, late summer and fall. You know, these people were working weekends, they're working holidays, they were here with other staff from the different offices that, you know, send people to us, and we thank those row officers who sent extra staff to help out, we certainly appreciate that. We got back over 135,000 ballots, came back in the mail, absentee and drop boxes in mail. Those 135,000 ballots were processed, as you heard Commissioner DeJure Alamo discuss the process, opened secrecy envelopes, opened ballots, flattened ballots, scanned, tabulations done, 135,000 ballots in 22 hours. Four years ago, working with a brand-new system of, of brand-new people who hadn't done this before, enduring COVID, we processed about that number, and it took us almost three days. And so, thinking about the work our staff did, and I know there were people, you know, employees from different offices, I know there were some who were there, when I got there at around quarter to seven on Tuesday morning, they were here, and I was still here, you know, talking about them, they were, they left some of them at 2:00 in the morning, you know? There was one woman who I think was still here at maybe 4:00, and that's not the Board of Election staff. The Board of Election staff, you know, they were joking about the fact that they had little alarms going off on their phone, that said they'd been in the office for over 24 hours, you know? And so that includes our elections director, you know, Tyler Burns, this is his first election, so he got baptized by fire, deputy director Shirley Maloney as well. On top of 153,000 applications that had been processed, on top of the 135,000 ballots that had to be, you know, brought in, organized, scanned, processed, they also processed over 100,000 voter registrations this year, another process our staff does. And they had to coordinate over 200 locations for 304 polling places, over 2,000 employees, and all the equipment and everything they needed so that they could run their election successfully. Certainly, for those that may have had issues that day, we apologize. As you could imagine, 7:00 AM on Election Day, when the judges of election start with their machines and looking at their materials, you could imagine 304 precincts, the phone's going to ring because a lot of, you know, people are going to say, "Wait, I'm missing this, I don't see this, I don't see that, you know, I thought I had more of this, I don't have more of this, this machine didn't operate, you know, it didn't start as quickly as it should have." So yes, the phones, you know, and that's not something you send to a call center. It would take us a couple of years to train a call center on how to answer those questions. That has to come to our staff. So 100,000 voter registrations, 153,000 applications, we got 140,000 back, and they're still processing as we speak. And so, special thanks, obviously, to all of those people that worked hard. One person who often flies under the radar, but is really sort of the Swiss Army knife of this county, doing pretty much anything we ask him to do and doing it extraordinarily well, hiding over in the corner, is Randy Miller. So we thank you, Randy, for how hard you worked. For our law department, I know Ms. Fitzpatrick, I think, had a 10-minute break over the 24-hour time span, so thank you for your work dealing with all the various legal issues that come up during the course of an election. So it's really, you know, it's a testament to how well things worked, that, you know, we completed the process as quickly and as accurately as we did, and they're still working. So I'm going to end just with a reminder to everyone about the holiday on Monday, Veterans' Day. Certainly want to thank the, you know, thousands and thousands of Bucks County residents who are veterans, whether they served at home or abroad, whether they were in times of war or peace, no matter what branch they served in, what their jobs were when they were in the service, we thank them very much for everything they did, for their time in the service and their dedication to this country. We, you know, remind you to pay special attention to them and pay attention to all sort of the different little ceremonies that are going on, on, in your communities throughout Bucks County on Monday, and, you know, stop by and certainly thank a veteran. And certainly, for veterans out there, remember that we do have a Veterans Affairs Office here in this county. Matt Allen, who himself is still, well, she's not a veteran technically because he's still in the reserves, but, you know, certainly serving our country in more ways than one. His office, which is, you know, a really dedicated staff, a very knowledgeable people, are here to help you. They can connect you to the VA, they can connect you to services that you may need, no matter what kind. They can answer questions about issues and benefits, and that's something to focus on. You know, he had a Veterans Expo last month, and something if, you know, for people who are out there or even in the room, if you have people who are active duty currently, if they're getting close to the end of their service in the United States military, have them start the process early of reaching out to the county or wherever county they are or where they want to live. Have them start the process early of connecting to the VA so they know ahead of time what services are available to them. It's not always something they think about, but certainly, even if they're 23 years old and coming out after having gone in when they were 18 or 19, you know, reach out to the VA, reach out to your local Veterans Affairs offices to try and start getting some things lined up so you understand what's, what's available to you that you can make use of because you're entitled to it, you know? It's something you've earned, so, and we're proud to provide it to you. So thank you, Commissioner, and I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you, and because I look too much with my eyes, thank you, Randy Miller, I didn't see you back there, you're just a little done for Election Day as well. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?